So, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March the 5th, 2019. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trusty Herrero, can you lead us into prayer?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, everyone, please join me in the sign of our faith. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Blessed are you, Lord God of all creation, for it is from your goodness that we have this day to celebrate on the threshold of the season of Lent. Tomorrow, we will fast and abstain from any sacrifices that we make, and yet today, we feast. We thank you for the abundance of gifts you shower upon us. We thank you especially for one another. As we give you thanks, we are mindful of those who have so much less than we do. As we share these wonderful gifts together, we commit ourselves to greater generosity towards those who need our support. As our feasting fills us with gratitude, so may our fasting and abstinence hollow out in us a place for deeper desires and an attentiveness to hear the cry of the poor. May our self-denial turn our hearts to you and give us a new freedom for generous service to others. We ask you these graces with our hearts full of delight and steering with readiness for the journey ahead. We ask him with confidence, in the name of Jesus the Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen.
I affirm that we are well faithful and bear true allegiance to the majesty of Queen Elizabeth the second, Queen of Canada, her heirs, successors, and that I am well faithful in terms of the law of Canada and fulfill my duties as a Canadian citizen.
Thank you, Trusty Herrero. The following motion was adopted in camera. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the memorandum settlement in incorporate behavior analysts into the existing APSSP collective agreement for the period of September the 1st, 2014, to August 31st, 2019. Vice Chair Murphy, could you please read the information received in camera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Acting Department Head, Special Education, Jeanne Vanier Catholic Secondary School, Laura Daly, appointed as Acting Department Head, Special Education at Jeanne Vanier Catholic Secondary School. Curriculum Coordinator, Jill Staples, reappointed as Curriculum Coordinator effective September 1st, 2019, for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. Acting Principal, St. Anthony of Padua Catholic Elementary School, Tom Duran, appointed as Acting Principal at St. Anthony of Padua, effective February 25th, 2019, to March 8th, 2019. Retirements, Terry Durham and Kimberly Casper retiring, effective June 30th, 2019.
Thank you, Trusty Murphy. On the approval of the agenda, I believe we have a recommendation to change the agenda with Trusty Massa's letter and to add that item on the agenda?
Correction, that letter came from Parent Council at Assumption High School. She merely read the letter.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest we add it as an information item so we can open it up to some discussion. In order to do that, we just need a motion, a secondary, and then a two-thirds positive vote.
That's what I was getting at. So can I have a motion to add that item?
Right.
Trusty Carabella?
I'd like to add...
Seconded?
Yep.
So can we have a vote to add the item? All four?
Maybe should be recorded.
Okay, Trusty Murphy?
In favor.
Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi?
In favor.
Trusty Massa?
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
Trusty Guzzo?
In favor.
So the item will be added under Action Items as an information item. So now can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trusty Duarte, Trusty Antomasi. Could we have a vote? Motion carries. Any declarations of conflict? No chuckles this time. So there are no declarations. No presentations this evening as well? We have no delegations. When we move to approve the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 19, 2019, regular board meeting? Trusty Guzzo? Trusty Agnew? All in favor? Motion carries. Business arising from previous minutes, no meetings, sorry? 7.1, summary of outstanding items from the previous meetings. The next item on the agenda is the business arising... Yes?
Can we have a... I have a question about the business arising from previous meetings.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I see that some dates have been put on, which is great. And I'm just wondering about the November 20th, the survey going out in April 2019 that's involving parents and has to do with their children who are gifted, currently enrolled in the Board. I'm just wondering if... I'd like some detail on the survey development and if it's going to be brought to the SEAC Committee for input.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can answer that or I could ask Dr. Keating to respond.
So we have met, myself and I've worked with the SEAC group, specifically with Camillo and his team. We have a survey that has been pretty much fully developed. We're waiting on just a couple of clarification points. This will not be brought to SEAC for review because we do not want it to be a biased survey. We don't want to present this to the parents or have it out there in any way because that could potentially bias the responses. But it will be brought as an information to provide an overview of what we're collecting.
Gosh, Carabella?
Just to follow up, pardon me, I don't understand the bias by bringing it to SEAC because it would be part of the information that would be out there as the documents, which means some parents, but not necessarily all, will be able to see it beforehand, which potentially introduces bias. So it's just it's better methodologically if everybody gets it who can respond all at the same time.
Gosh, Carabella?
Sorry. But in creating the questions, not actually seeing them, but in creating the questions, maybe with a select few, or is anybody on the committee from SEAC doing the questions?
Nobody that is a parent who would be a responder. So we are working with the SEAC team. We can bring a... What we'll do is we'll bring a general what we're asking in terms of the information we're trying to gather, and we can ensure that we are... So we have already met the obligation of the motion. The additional data that's being collected is actually data that's being used by the staff to look at programming options. So we can bring it and we can take people's feedback and we can look at ways of incorporating the information that people want in that survey or other surveys, but we can't distribute the full survey for feedback to people who are going to be responding to it. Does that make sense?
Trusty O'Brien?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So at this point, only you and your team have seen the survey until the day it's released, correct?
Well, the research team has worked with the special education staff. So it's been basically it's staff that's developing it? Yes. Is that your question?
And Trusty Charlebois?
This is something that directly impacts students. Is there any way we can get student voice on it, whether it just be the student trustees who can have an objective view or opening it up to a select few students to provide their input? You know, I understand opening it up to students provides the issue of the parents then receiving the questions. However, by opening up to the student trustees, we are bound by our code of conduct. So is that a possibility that we can provide our input on the questions?
That's an interesting concept, and I can certainly bring that back to the SEAC team and we can discuss that, yeah. Focus groups are definitely a part of our plan in terms of data collection for other surveys. So we can either add that to other focus groups or we can talk about it for the specific survey. But definitely, we will be conducting focus groups with students in the near future regarding this and other initiatives.
Thank you. Business arising from previous meetings, the table in your package includes all the running list of the matters pending from previous meetings. Moving on to action items, Policy 4-6, School Sites and Facilities. Trusty Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy IV-06, School Sites and Facilities Criteria be approved as amended.
Can I have a secondary, please? Trusty Antomasi? Any questions? I'll call for a registered vote. Patrick Murphy?
In favor.
Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi?
In favor.
Trusty Massa?
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
Motion carries. Moving on to...
A point of order, Mr. Chair. I believe I get a chance to vote.
Oh, okay.
In favor?
In favor, all right, very good. You shouldn't assume things, eh? We all do it every once in a while, my apologies. Item 8.2, Policy 4-07, Alternative Arrangements for School Facilities. Trusty Guzzo?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy IV-07, Alternative Arrangements for School Facilities be approved as reviewed.
May I have a secondary? Trusty Agnew? Any questions? I'll call for a vote around the table. Trusty Murphy?
Favor.
Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi?
In favor.
Trusty Massa?
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
And Trusty Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion carries. Item 8.3, Policy 4-8, School Sites and Operating Budget.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy IV-08, School Sites and Operating Budgets be approved as reviewed.
May I have a secondary, please? Trusty Zarnota? Any questions? I'll call for a vote. Trusty Murphy?
In favor.
Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi?
In favor.
Trusty Massa?
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
Trusty Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion carries. Item 8.4, Policy 5-03, Photography, Advertising and Sales Representatives. Trusty Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy V-03, Photographs, Advertising and Sales Representatives name be changed to Policy V-03, Photography, Advertising and Sales Representatives and be approved as amended.
Any questions? Go to a vote. Trusty Murphy?
In favor.
Trusty Carabella?
You need a secondary.
Ah, may I have a secondary? Trusty Duarte? Okay. Go back to the vote. Trusty Murphy?
Still in favor.
Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi?
In favor.
Trusty Massa?
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
Trusty Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion carries. Item 8.5, Policy 5-09, Public Concerns/Complaints Process. Trusty Guzzo?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that Policy V-09, Public Concerns/Complaints Process be approved as amended.
May I have a secondary, please? Trusty O'Brien? Any questions? I'll call to a vote. Patrick Murphy?
In favor.
Elena Carabella?
In favor.
Vincent Antomasi?
In favor.
Stephanie Massa?
In favor.
Tim O'Brien?
In favor.
Trusty Herrero?
In favor.
Trusty Duarte?
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Charlebois?
In favor.
And Trusty Guzzo?
In favor.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, Staff Reports. There are no staff reports. And item number 10, Information Items. 10.1, Student Trustees Update. Student Trusty Herrero?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. We just have a few, very few things to just point out to the entire school board. So myself and my co-student trustees attended the Osteico BCC meeting in Ottawa from Thursday, February 21st to Sunday, February 24th. At the conference, we had quite a few Board Council breakouts with student trustees from the Catholic boards all over the province. Some items that were discussed were actions leaning towards the end of the school year, such as possibilities of leaning with Tunis for tuition and Raising the Roof organization charities. We also observed the Vision Document for Osteico about the vision for education, and the student trustees of the General Assembly are still working together to review the entire document that is in the liking of most student trustees. There was also a public affairs training that revolves around the items of advocacy, building a brand, and strengthening our voice upon future incoming student trustees. We lastly closed the conference with our organization's Working Group breakout, and the Ontario Student Voice Awards of Osteico has released applications on their website that may encourage graduating students all over the province to possibly receive $1,000 in versary towards their post-secondary tuition. And lastly, we also have our next Senate meeting on Tuesday, March 26th, at Bishop Reading, and I'm happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Trusty Herrero. School Educational Field Trips, Superintendent McGillicuddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Presented information are the approved school educational trips. We'd be happy to take questions at this time.
Any questions? Item 10.3, Extended French Update. Director Daly?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to update trustees on actions that have been taken as a result of Resolution Number 2719, which delayed the implementation of the Extended French Strategy in our Oakville Family Schools by one year. The report also includes an overview of the original information report that was presented to the Board of Trustees in October of 2018, as well as the entire report that was presented to trustees in October for your information. Just a couple of things to highlight, both in the original report and certainly moving forward, the goal of the recommendations of senior staff was to ensure the long-term sustainability of optional French programming and to minimize and possibly eliminate future relocations. I would bring your attention to a couple of items in the more detailed section that starts on page 44 of the Board Package or page 4 of 9. We did establish seven different areas that we wanted to look at in terms of making our decisions around French programming. Again, that under item number 1, ensuring that once the program's been cited, that it could remain at that location for the long term, avoiding future relocations. Under item 2, the locations that were selected by senior staff would not require future boundary reviews to overutilization. Furthermore, none of the options required a boundary review to relocate in regular-track students to accommodate the French programs. Under item number 3, the ultimate distribution would align our Extended French Family of Schools with our secondary family of schools. Under item number 4, elementary schools in the area north of the QEW within Loyola and HT's boundaries are projected to continue to have significant amount of available space. So that was something that we factored in. Under item number 5, the realignment would give us four... Each of the Extended French families would have four families of schools feeding into it, and each Extended French school would have three feeder schools. So it would equalize that element of it. Under item number 6, the new alignment would bring our Extended French families of schools into more of a neighborhood school model, which would help with some transportation and travel time concerns. So that was... Those additional details were in response to some of the questions that we received throughout the process from some of the stakeholders in the Glen Abbey area. In terms of the Board resolution to defer that movement for a year, once the resolution was made, families that had been part of the lottery system under the new boundaries that we had suggested were given the option either to continue with the seat they had gained in the lottery process at St. Bernadette's or Our Lady of Peace, or to remain at St. Matthews for that school year. So that process was undertaken, and parents have indicated their desire in terms of where they want to go or where they'd like their students, their children, to go. For the 2019-20 school year, we'll continue to accommodate grade five students at St. Matthews, and we'll also accommodate them at St. Joan of Arc, at St. Bernadette, at Our Lady of Peace, St. Michael's, St. Marguerite. We'll continue to accommodate schools as listed. Starting in 2021, then, we'll look at implementing our original Extended French program as illustrated in the report. If there's any questions on either the additional information or if there's any information missing, I'd be happy to answer those questions. If there's more technical questions around enrollment numbers, Fred would also be happy to join in as well.
Trusty Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Secretary Daly, I do have a question, and maybe I've missed it. But one of the questions that came up that was driven not only from the parents, but I believe some of us trustees here at the table asked, which was what were we looking at about a boundary, students that were allowed into the St. Matthews program? Because we believe that that was one of the factors that was causing the number of portables, and I don't believe I see that here unless I'm missing it.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So the cross-boundary students that are being allowed that are non-French immersion? One of the concerns that came forward from the parents in several communications that were shared with us was that there was a lot of students that were being allowed from cross-boundary. We had asked to see that detail. That was one of the things that we had talked about when we put this motion on the table, and that was one of the things that the parents had asked specifically in their delegation and in other correspondence in the Board. I don't believe that's been addressed at this point.
Okay, so are you asking what the total number of cross-boundary students was or why there's such a large number, or both?
Both, and one further question that comes to that is, when you allow those cross-boundaries, are then we allowing siblings to do that? And are we actually looking to see if there's actually a need to have a cross-boundary looked into? Like, I think those are important. Is it just one cross-boundary or is it the whole family that's been allowed to do cross-boundary? Because those all affect the enrollment numbers at St. Matthews.
Yeah, and certainly the number of students who have applied in terms of the French program also contributes to the numbers. There's no doubt that the percentage number of cross-boundary students at St. Matthews is higher than any of the other schools in Oakville. It's about 30% of the school population. The exact number, I can look it up now, might be one... I'm looking at Fred for a specific number, but he might not have that at his fingertips, 100, give or take, maybe slightly higher. In terms of the cross-boundary application process, it's dealt with student by student. In terms of past practice, I really can't speak to decisions that were made last year or in previous years. Cross-boundary is based on availability at the school and again on a student by student basis.
Sorry, just as a follow-up to that, but if we were to do a comparison with other schools and what's allowed in cross-boundaries, they should be pretty relevant, right? Because cross-boundary events are... Because cross-boundary events are, cross-boundary allotments are usually, like you said, it's on a case-by-case basis. But if we see a higher increase in St. Matthews, there must be something in place that identifies why there's a higher number of requests for cross-boundaries and why they're being allowed, especially if we're projecting that there is that many portables. This is something that could have been foreseen, right? Like, I'm just trying to understand. And I think it's really important for us to see those numbers.
Okay. If that's an element that's missing from this update, I can certainly provide specific numbers. Absolutely. I can bring those back to the board.
Superintendent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can speak to the cross-boundaries. I was a superintendent for St. Matthews for the last few years. And again, as Director Daly points out, it is on a case-by-case basis. Families' request to come in to the schools, some had been denied. But if there is room in classes where a child, a parent makes a request and the request is a reasonable request to do so, usually it would be granted if there is room for that. Why it's higher at St. Matthews than others? St. Matthews certainly has a reputation of families wanting to go to the school. Sometimes it may be related to siblings, sometimes. Rarely though, was it siblings in French immersion? It was more of the request to go to that area, whether it be for close by in terms of other facilities regarding babysitting possibly. It would be based on school needs at the school. So there was a number of factors, but it was always again, case-by-case basis. And where there was room in a school, in the classes, those were approved upon those requests.
Trustee.
Thank you. So through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps to Superintendent Overholt. So when you speak about there being room, were all of these cross-boundary approvals given prior to any portables being put in? Because when we talk about room and available space, I mean, knowing that there was portables there, I just wondered if that was a factor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It was based upon what we had at the time. So if there was a portable there, it was, there was not extra portables put in based on cross-boundaries. So it was based on the numbers that were there at the school at the time. So if we had X number of classrooms there at the school, the cross-boundaries were approved based on how many classes we had available. It wasn't based on, we'll add as many as we have. It was based on whatever was there at the time.
Trustee O'Brien, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Regarding, to Director Daly, regarding the piece on Burlington. The report says, "In the event greater demand is generated in Burlington, additional locations will be explored for their viability and sustainability." So with the possibility of greater demand in Burlington and keeping in mind that there is a shortage of French teachers, does HR have a plan of recruiting in place to meet this possible greater demand?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent O'Hara, could you just speak a little bit to our French teacher recruitment? So we have gone out to all the faculties of education in Ontario looking for French teachers and encouraging them. We've done a number of interviews already for individuals who have applied to us. We did about four days of interviews. I'm happy to report that we do have certainly healthy interest in new candidates to come to our board. We have not gone and made any offers of employment for next year at this stage. As you all know, that there has been a ministry memo on that topic to which we're reviewing. We have gone and indicated to some of the individuals that we've interviewed that we're certainly interested in them in occasional supply. And we'll be reviewing potential permanent offerings over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Follow-up question?
Mr. Chair. So, Superintendent, so in the next couple of weeks, do you think you'll be hiring some French teachers? Again, thanks for that question. And through the chair. We are a growth board, so although we have received some requests from the ministry to not look at hiring until after March the 15th and there being some announcements. French teachers are a bit unique. And some of our concern is that if we don't go and make some offers, that those individuals won't be there. So it is our intention, after some review in terms of what our needs will be with our curriculum department, that we will likely be offering over the course of the next couple of weeks, some jobs for 2019-20 school year.
Thank you. Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. But one is also one I think that the parents of the community of St. Matthews were wondering. And I don't know if it was really answered in the report, is that from the long-term capital plan that happened in June to October, when, well, the long-term capital plan was set for the year 2021 to 22. So sort of what happened between June and the summer and October that brought the plan so dramatically forward?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask Fred to speak to the long-term capital plan.
Mr. Thibault.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. With regards to long-term capital plan, so the purpose of that is to provide an overlook and a guideline and somewhat of an idea of where we're moving forward in the next few years. It's not meant to define the date exactly, specifically to when we're going to be undertaking this work. So with regards to the St. Matthews area, we did note that we would like to look at not only just the French program review generally, but really that was more around a full boundary review process for the regular track program to try to balance out enrollment in that area. And we were going to, because we're in the process, maybe look at extended French and EFI delivery in that program as well at that time. Now, to your earlier question as to what happened between the time when we, the Board of Trustees approved that plan in principle and what happens in October is, previous to that, if you may recall, we had a Oakville Northeast pupil accommodation review that we had undertaken. And part of that review was after we had implemented some of the closures, St. John's specifically, we would also explore the introduction of an extended French program within the Holy Trinity family of schools area, which at the time before we had undertaken these changes that we put in place now, we had our St. Michael's, St. Andrews, Our Lady of Peace, and St. John at the time having to travel into the St. Anatius of Loyola area in order to attend an extended French program. So this had been a commitment that we had made throughout that process to introduce a family of schools at Our Lady of Peace as soon as we could. So we decided that this year would be the year to do so. Now, in creating this program at OLP, as we had dedicated to do as part of the Oakville Northeast Pupil Accommodation Review, what we effectively had to do is we removed Our Lady of Peace, St. Andrews, and St. Michael's, which was now consolidated with St. John's, from St. Matthews and St. Bernadette as feeder schools. So in doing so, now we have removed an enrollment base in creating this one classroom. And we had to reorganize those boundaries as well so that we could reorient the family of schools now in the St. Anatius of Loyola. So because we were already undertaking the work as part of the Holy Trinity area, we decided, well, how about we open up the entire extended French program to find a way to provide a more equitable access to all students within the area north of Oakville, north of the QEW. So as Director Daly had pointed out earlier, what we were looking at was, okay, we're looking at the family of schools and trying to maximize the access to as many schools as possible. We looked to creating families of schools that were in a neighborhood model that didn't have too many schools that were competing for those classrooms for extended French and grouping them together. So ultimately, at the end of this process, what we ended up with in opening everything at once and not doing it piecemeal is to have a three-to-one ratio for our extended French family of schools to three feeder schools going into one program. So that way, there's not as many students vying for that one seat and there's a little bit more access. Then we have them all in a neighborhood model where they're not having to travel from the St. Anatius boundary all the way over to the, sorry, the Holy Trinity boundary all the way over to the St. Anatius area that was in Glen Abbey at St. Matthews and Bernadette. So we tried to divvy up the program and introduce it in new locations where they were sustainable long-term. They would take up existing classroom spaces that were being underutilized, putting these students out of temporary space, which comes at a cost, and putting them into empty places, which also come at a cost if we're not operating them. So we were trying to find through these seven criteria the best location. So ultimately, we managed to introduce a new spot in the St. Joan of Arc area, in the West Oak Trails in Bronte area, which was an area that has a high concentration of public board for French programming, but not for ours. So we now have a presence there and that neighborhood now has an opportunity to attend there. Glen Abbey, ultimately, they still have the same number of, same level of access as they did beforehand. Now, instead of being in two locations, in one location. We've introduced a new location in Our Lady of Peace. So now the Holy Trinity family of schools have a second location to access. So Marguerite and St., sorry, Our Lady of Peace. And it's all balanced to be aligned also with the secondary boundaries. Because before, what was happening is that we had students that were in the Trinity family of school area that were now attending a St. Anatius of Loyola elementary school. And ultimately, then we were splitting our enrollment. We were declining the enrollment of Holy Trinity. So now, in undertaking this entire exercise and looking at it on an equity standpoint, an efficiency standpoint, a transportation standpoint, an access standpoint, we managed to balance this whole program out. Now, whereas if we would have waited for 2020 to do that, we would only be able to have done half the work and not have been able to balance it out. And it would have been over two processes. Now that we've attained this, we can now have a long-term sustainability and the extended French program can, you know, more or less be left alone for a long while now that we have it in locations that are sustainable and can accommodate the program without exceeding more than normal costs. So that was the overall rationale as to why we advanced it by one year instead of waiting. And we're going to continue to monitor enrollment. So our overall plan is to try to use the space that we have and not rely on things that are temporary. So that was the overall thought as to why we did not wait. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mr. Thibault. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So just a question, and you may be able to answer it, may not be able to answer it. And I'm not sure who, but I'll direct it at Secretary Daly. And you can delegate it to who would be best suited to answer it. What is the enrollment in the high schools? Like, what is the graduation rate in those that continue from grade eight on into the high schools? Are, like, are the numbers balanced? Are we seeing them what we see them starting at grade five? Or is it carrying through to grade eight? Because I think those are all, I'm just, I'm interested to see because we're talking about the feeding into the schools and what the enrollment is. And I'm just trying to understand.
Do you mean specific to students who are studying extended French or in general?
That are specifically, I'm talking specifically about the extended French.
Again, just so I'm clear. So is the question, how many students in the extended French program study extended French at high school? Okay. I don't know that number off the.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the exact numbers, but the retention rate is about 30%. In fairness, that is with regard to extended French. We don't have our first early French immersion graduates. They'll be entering the program in 2020, 2021. And so we'll see what the retention rates look like at that time, but it is about 30% or less.
Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one other question was regarding the change in the registrations for all the French programs. Sort of what was the reason for changing from January and February in the year to now being November?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And again, I think we talked about this back in October. But in terms of moving the date up, my understanding was that came from, that request came from parents in terms of trying to get those decisions made earlier. That's my understanding. That was feedback that we had from parents.
Follow-up question.
Yeah, just to follow up, which parents or what avenue did you get that from?
That was the information that I received from staff when I came into the job.
Okay. I think we're done on this one. Are we? One more question.
And what is the plan of communicating this to the community of St. Matthews? Think that part of the motion was that their answers, their questions to their, no, their answers to their questions would be received? Like this report, like how are the parents going to be notified of this report?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think the motion asked for some clarification to trustees around what the process was. The motion delayed the implementation for a year. So we did take that under advisement and acted on it. In terms of how this particular report is communicated to anybody, it'd be communicated the same way it is in any board report.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is Milton number three Catholic Secondary School Public Information Meeting. Mr. Thibault.
I'll stay here. Through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to advise the Board of Trustees that we did have our public information meeting on February 13th at John Vanny Catholic Secondary School. And also in tow with that, we also wanted to notify the Board of Trustees that there will be the statutory public information meeting occurring at the Town of Milton, at their council, on March 25th, 2019 at 7:00. So if you would like to attend and join, by all means. We attach for information also the minutes of the public information meeting that we hosted. That says Appendix A. And we also attach the notification that was provided to us by the Town of Milton with regards to the statutory public meeting as Appendix B. Another piece I would love to encourage the Board of Trustees to subscribe to is the Board's school planning website, which if you do subscribe to the website that we have, and we provided all the links here, what it does is every time we make any sort of update to the website, whether it's a new post or any additional information on any of the projects that are occurring throughout the region, updates to long-term capital plan, updates to our MASMIC site, you should receive a notification by email that will advise you of such so you can keep aligned with all things planning in our portfolio. And I'd also encourage to relay that to your constituency as well if they want to stay informed as to what's happening in their communities. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Thibault.
So the request, I think everybody's been either emailed or has a hard copy of the information that came from the Assumption Catholic School Council. So if you can refer to that. I really can't direct the discussion, I guess, but I guess we're opening the floor up to discuss the request.
So just going back to what we had said earlier about we're a little bit unclear as to who would be eligible, I guess, for lack of a better term, to respond to this officially. Thinking that perhaps part of that might be those who reside within the municipality. So I'm wondering if there would be some value then in if we're looking at, if we're in agreement, if we're looking at putting together a letter of response that it come from the three Burlington trustees as opposed to coming from the board in its entirety? If, I'd hate to put forward a letter from the entire board if we think that that might negate because of that piece. So just.
Director Daly.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking now at information from the Alcohol Gaming Commission website on filing written submissions. So it says under written submissions with regards to this particular issue, under the public notice process, written submissions about a retail store authorization application can only be made to the registrar by, bullet number one, a resident of the municipality in which the proposed store is located. Bullet number two, the municipality representing the area in which the proposed store is located. Bullet number two, the municipality representing the area in which the proposed store is located. If the municipality is a lower-tier municipality, then the upper-tier municipality would make that submission. So it would appear to me that the process, the submission process is done by people who live in the municipality as opposed to from other...
And by the town, I would say, right? By the town of Milton. Burlington, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Assumption is an entity that lives within that realm, so, and so there's the board. As such, I think we can, both as a body, as well as a school entity, which we already have a letter from them, make representation on this matter.
Trusty Murphy.
Why don't we cover our bases, and the Burlington trustees do it, and the board?
Trusty O'Brien.
I think trustee Ian Tomasi has made a good point, in the fact that our board office is very close, very, very close to this outlet. I think that, in my opinion, justifies a letter from the board, but that's only my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I ask you a question? For added comfort and added support, would the Town of Burlington back up that letter?
I don't think they can. They represent the whole city. As such, they can't just make representation on behalf of us. They would have to do so on behalf of both school boards. And unless the other school board has already made, you know, asked them to do that, then I would say no.
Thank you. Just another question. Do we know, are they in contravention of the bylaws in any way?
No, they are not.
Director Daly, did you want to say something?
I'm not a hundred percent sure whether the fact that the school building or the board office resides in the municipality makes that a resident of the municipality. So that's something we could follow up on. I don't think it would necessarily, it's not illegal to make a written submission. I just wonder how effective it would be. We might send a letter, again, under the direction of the trustees to the City of Burlington as opposed to the Gaming Commission, although the City of Burlington has already approved the fact that the bricks and mortar store can be built, and they're following through on that process.
Can I make, have we referred at all in this, has somebody referred to the City of Burlington?
So the licensing comes from the province, so it would be foolish to make any submissions to the city.
Trusty Guzzo.
I think as representatives of a group, and it suits our interests, we're an interested party, I think we can absolutely, it doesn't stop us from making submissions to government, to anything. And I think what we do is, is we do it on behalf of them, in conjunction with them. And I think we suggest that they also write in as well. I think maybe that's something that we could do as trustees, is we can respond back to them as council to say, you know, we implore everybody to make their own submissions individually because those will hold weight, and that we can do it collectively in conjunction with their parent council and with individual parents. There's nothing that ever stops us from, what's the worst thing that they could do? Ignore our letter?
Trusty...
I do just think at a minimum that we need to have something at least come from our Burlington trustees. You know, this is a letter that's come from parent council at Assumption. I think it's a serious matter that could be affecting a number of our students. So at a minimum, I do think that it warrants our participation in a letter to that end. So, you know, I don't know if we want to debate whether or not, no, I mean, I don't want to slow down the process, I think is probably, so, you know, I don't know if we want to go back and forth about whether or not the building actually resides in Burlington, if that makes it, you know, I just, I think that in the interest of time, you know, to make sure that we do submit something, I would be comfortable sending something on behalf of the three trustees from Burlington if we think that it requires, you know, a larger piece behind that than...
Trusty O'Brien.
Picking back on that, thank you through, Mr. Chair. I think it's a good suggestion. I'm wondering about protocol. Can we, I mean, I know the game, can we sign our names as trustees in a threesome letter? I, is that okay? I mean, can a letter go out from three Burlington trustees? I just wanted to make sure, remember, getting into board protocol, sending out any correspondence?
Director Daly.
Yeah, I don't think there would be a problem with that. In fact, if it's the will of the board to send a letter on behalf of all of the trustees, we could certainly, and we're on a bit of a time crunch, staff could craft that letter and then send it on your behalf. I think to get some direction from the board, I mean, we could make a motion that's germane to our discussion right now, that we send one on behalf of the board and get it done, I guess, by the end of the day tomorrow or the next day. That's just a suggestion.
Trustees, I don't know that.
What is the date for submission? What's the deadline date? Tomorrow.
The sixth.
March sixth?
That's when they're submitting.
Okay. So my other question is going to be, I've always lived my life, silence is acceptance, so if we don't accept it, we should write a letter, period, on behalf of the board.
But just to clarify, in terms of the process, so once the posting goes up, there's fifteen days to respond. Having not seen the posting, I think the letter we received from the school council said, use the date of March seventh. That's when they had to put it six or seven, so I'm assuming that's the fifteenth day, not having, not having seen the actual posting. So we need to get it done within the next day, for sure.
So do we want to, do we want to move a motion for that letter to get written? Can I have a mover? Trusty Antomasi.
Move that we write the letter on behalf of the board. I don't think it's worthwhile writing just the three Burlington trustees, otherwise we wouldn't be deliberating it.
So we have a motion on the table. Can I have a second? We've debated it. Can we vote?
Just for our purposes, a little more clarity around what the motion is actually, what the motion's actually...
As a result of the letter received from parent council at Assumption, I would move that we write a letter, that is, the Board of Trustees, through you, Secretary Daly, to make representation that perhaps an alternate site should be found, preferably in an industrial zone. So, I mean, the wording, I don't know. I leave it up to you.
Can we vote?
Just to continue that, just to say that the, that we direct the staff, through you, Director Daly, that you compose a letter that the trustees can send in response to the letter received from parent council, and write the letter to the AGCEO in regards to the location of the cannabis store in conjunction to its location with Assumption High School, and that they find an alternate location. And I think in just outlining why it is not an ideal location, given the nature of the store and the school, the school and the students attending the school. Is that more detailed?
That's incredible detail, yeah. Just, in terms of maybe cleaning up the resolution a little bit, I'm hoping that board will be accepting when we look at the minutes, if it is cleaned up a little bit to something of, the resolution is to respond to the request by Assumption School Council to write a letter, then, yes.
So the motion is to write, instruct the staff to write a letter on this issue, pretty simply. Director Daly.
Yeah, I think the resolution is that the Board of Trustees are going to write, make a submission to the Alcohol Gaming Commission. They're asking staff to, to staff to compose a letter on their behalf. But it's the Board of Trustees that's sending the letter.
Yes. So can I have, take a vote. Trusty Murphy.
In favor.
Trusty Carabella.
In favor.
Trusty Antomasi.
In favor.
Trusty Mazau.
In favor.
Trusty O'Brien.
In favor.
Trusty Araro.
In favor.
Trusty Duarte.
In favor.
Trusty Zarnota. Trusty Agnew.
In favor.
Trusty Charabon.
In favor.
Trusty Guzzo.
In favor.
Motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous information. Minutes of the January eighth, 2019 Policy Committee meeting provided for your information. Eleven point two is minutes from the January thirtieth, twenty nineteen. SEAC meeting provided for your information. Correspondence, we have correspondence from Ms. Lorenko is provided in your information.
Just regarding the correspondence and Mrs. Lorenko's letter, how are we going to address?
We received a letter. It's under the information, and we're providing information on it.
Just all her questions that she has asked, will they be somehow answered for her?
Director Daly.
I think most of those questions will fall under the discussion item at our next policy meeting with regards to her questions, so I, and I think that the chair has responded in that regard.
I didn't see that email. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the information received brings no new information to the table. She's very agitating, essentially the same items that she did in her first submissions. We're accepting that. You did accept it, and you've given it to us tonight, but there's no any new information there whatsoever. She, our bylaws state that she's not allowed to present any more information for a year.
Point taken. The response was done in, was done in the spirit of respect for the concerns expressed.
But at some point, we have to deal with our bylaws. So if we're going to keep making exceptions, then we need to make exceptions for everybody. In this case, we've made more than one exception. We currently have four motions on the table. We have not vacated the first one because we haven't acted upon it. The second one, the second one suspends the first one, and the third one suspends the second one, and the fourth one suspends all of our motions. So at some point, we're going to have to deal with these motions. I would suggest that perhaps we need to remove some of these motions so that we can deal with this effectively, because as it is right now, it's a quagmire. I don't know how we can deal with it, because everything is contingent on the previous motion, the amendment to the amendment.
Director Daly.
Just with regards to the, in terms of the bylaws, they are, we are going to review them this spring, so I think correspondence and how we deal with it might be something we, that might be something that trustees want to consider.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's very specific, new information. We've deliberated this matter. It was deliberated by the old council back in November. A decision was made. No action was taken on that decision. We then supplemented a new motion. The new motion was contingent on certain things happening, which was an addendum. We then turned around and put another motion with another clause in there. At what point are we going to vacate the first motion? Because that motion is still sitting there, and it needs to be dealt with. Technically, if we really look at it, by us undertaking any kind of a study, we've affected, we effectively made the first motion active. As such, we can't even rescind this particular motion, the original motion that is...
Any comments?
Trusty Antomasi, I'm looking at the bylaws, and I don't see where it says any more correspondence having to wait a year. Could you please point that out to me?
So, again, I'm not going to do your work for you, but our bylaws are very clear...
I think if you, if they're clear, could you please point it out to me, where it is clear? They're right here, can you just please show me? I think I'm asking a simple question.
Trusty Murphy.
I made a commitment to trustee Agnew not to get sucked into these debates. Someday that I would, I would stop doing that. Today, unfortunately, is not that day. So I think the, the way that the motion is structured now is contingent on receiving funding. So if we receive funding, then things can be, action can be taken. If we don't receive funding, then it's debt. So go ahead.
Trusty Guzzo.
It's, there's many moving parts, thank you through, Mr. Chair, there's many moving parts to it, and I understand what you're trying to say. However, it has all been put on hold based on what is discussed, and there was an equity piece that was also put into it in conjunction with the funding piece. So those two items, we have to address, and we're addressing them for policy, and then they can be brought back. If you're saying that if we think that the motions need to be revisited and maybe withdrawn, maybe we need to put it on the table and, and, you know, have them all withdrawn, and come up with a whole new resolution that deals with it, all encompassing. The question is, is are we prepared to do that today, or should we put it on as an action item for the next board meeting?
Director Daly.
I don't have an answer, or it's not my role to have answer for trustee Guzzo on that one. Yeah, I would just suggest that correspondence be treated as such. It's information. We can read it. I don't think it should necessarily lead to extended debate on what the correspondence is about. That's really dealt with in either, in the appropriate manner in the body of the meeting. I think if we continue to treat correspondence as a delegation without a person here, then it's going to be seen as a way to get things continually onto the floor that should be most properly dealt with, our regular bylaw procedure.
I would suggest that correspondence, first and foremost, requires at least some attention and some response. That's what happened. With respect to trustee Guzzo's description, she's quite correct. The process is such that it's going to find its way through the Policy Committee, and we are ultimately waiting for the decision from our government to fund. Nothing else has happened yet, so...
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I think we are, and just to reiterate what Secretary Daly says, is I think this is just for information, right? Correct? Does anybody can submit any type of correspondence? No, I know, and you're asking on how it's addressed, and I think our chair will address and respond to any of the correspondence that won't be dealt with here through the board, it'll be dealt with through any email correspondence, because it isn't a new delegation or anything new.
Which it's, which it's been done. Okay? Trusty...
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we need to go back to the original motion. So the original motion, which was passed on November the eighteenth, required action. We provided that action in the second motion by asking staff to give us a report. So that particular original motion is being worked on as we speak. As such, we can't even rescind the original motion. So I'm talking about this from a point of order. Whether or not we want to accept information is irrelevant to this. We have to look at the motions that are on the table, and we're not doing that. To rescind the original motion to make the other ones active. So technically, we're still working on the original motion. Because it was never removed, it was never rescinded.
But we are discussing miscellaneous information received, right? So if this discussion has to go any deeper, it has to be resubmitted under an action item of sorts. It's not, your points are well taken, but that's not what we're really trying to do on this category here. We're under, we're discussing information.
Through you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, you keep bringing this matter to this board table. At some point, it has to be dealt with, whether it's through correspondence and responding to the person that's made the delegation in the past. The point is, this particular motion was passed by the old Board.
Trustee Carabella.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think maybe there's a confusion between delegation and correspondence. Maybe the year, the year limit you're talking about refers to delegation. This is correspondence, and there's nothing in our bylaws that says you can write to the Board about the same matter. What we're having now is this discussion that's different than the actual act of a parent or somebody writing a letter of correspondence.
Trustee O'Brien.
Just for clarification, this is what our bylaws say about correspondence, under item 9.5. Correspondence, all correspondence requiring the collection of decision of the Board, and which has yet to be decided by the Board, shall be tabled for Board consideration and direction. The Board shall provide direction as to how, the Board shall provide direction as to how either the Chair or Secretary of the Board shall respond. So there is, there is a, Trustee Antomasi is making a point, we do have to respond, but there is not a 12-month period on this. But that is what it says in our bylaws. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
A point of order, you have to be recognized.
Okay, I'm gonna allow one more, one more comment as a follow-up.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The point of the correspondence, she's giving us directions. She's asking for questions. Those particular questions can only be answered by reports from staff. As such, it's still part of the original motion and the supplementary motions that are on the table, which we have not dealt with. I'm not against her sending us correspondence. I'm against, what actions are we going to take? How do we remove the motions in front of the last motion in order to deal with this matter once and for all? It can't be suspended forever.
Is this something we can deal in a more direct way at the next meeting? And I would suggest if that's the case, then you put it forward that way. But it's not to be dealt today. Any comments to this? Because we're gonna close the discussion, move on to the next item. Thank you. At this point, we have to go back into camera for the purpose of finalizing one more item. So I'd like to, I'd like to have a motion to go back into camera. Trustee Carabella. Trustee Agnew. All in favor? Motion passes.
I'm gonna dismiss senior staff for this item from the in-camera session.